Live and recording.
All right. Good morning, everyone. We need to take roll call. First order of business is to take roll. So Madam Secretary, if you could.
Barahona?
Present.
Buena Ventura? I do see Trustee Buena Ventura is in attendance, but is muted. We'll go on.
I'm present.
Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chen?
Here.
Sisneros?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Grande?
Here.
Huser?
Here.
Shelby?
Present.
Soell?
Present.
Stallings?
Present.
Stevens?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
Trejo, not present. You have a quorum chair.
All right. Thank you. And welcome back to the Board of Trustees meeting July 19th. We are continuing with our business items, specifically 6.6, which is our remaining item. This is a discussion regarding state bar policy on generative AI use. And this is being presented by Executive Director Leah Wilson and then our Executive Director of Legal Design Lab, or not our, but Executive Director of Legal Design Lab, Stanford Law School, Margaret Hagan. So welcome to Margaret. Good to see you, Leah.
Great. Thank you. And I can't see if Margaret has been promoted or Yan Wu, Louisa.
Margaret is here and Yan Wu should be joining as your panelist as well.
All right. Great. So I will kick this off and then just give the board an overview of what I hope we're gonna do this morning. So first, I want to thank Trustee Tony. Really, you were the impetus for this session. As some of you will recall, we had an overview, we provided an overview of AI and the practice of law at your January planning session. And there was some concern expressed. I think I don't want to put words in your mouth, Trustee Tony, but one, that it was kind of a sales job for AI and that we needed to have a more robust conversation about it. But two, you know, the focus of that conversation was really on this, your role as a regulator of the legal profession, not on the state bar's own use of AI. And so sort of your role as a governance body for us as an organization. And so that's where, fast forward, I think Trustee Tony found a great article that Margaret wrote, which is attached to your agenda item and it reflects an exercise. And for those of you that know anything about Stanford's Legal Design Lab, it's really, you know, done a great deal of work in the space of access and technology and access. So we're really fortunate to have Ms. Hagan with us. So Mark initiated having this presentation, or really a facilitated discussion. And what I wanted to do to provide some context for the discussion is just to remind the board of what's happened to date at the state bar. So one, we did develop and promulgate interim guidelines for AI use for our own organization, and those were attached to your agenda item. We've established a community of practice for AI. And what that means is we've given folks that are interested in testing different tools, the opportunity to procure those tools and to use them. And the requirement is that they document their use cases and their experiences as part of this community of practice. And of course, there's guidelines for the use of confidential information in those exercises, et cetera. But really try to encourage kind of organic interest in the tools and organic identification of how we might leverage them in our organization. And the community of practice in particular has had the benefit of some training, both in person and then some online training. And many of us are participating right now in a great series that's being put on by Berkeley Law. So that's kind of a bit of what's going on. The last thing I'll say is we have about three different strands of activity designed to secure, not proprietary tools for the state bar, but closed AI domains for the state bar with three different vendors, so that in those circumstances, we could actually provide confidential information in those closed systems and use it to do some things beyond what is, you know, limited to publicly available material. So those things are all underway. Given that all of that is underway and we do not have dedicated staffing to lead this effort at the state bar, I decided to have the focus of my summer intern be on AI. And in comes Yan Wu Li. Really fortunate to have her with me this summer. And a big shout out to the state bar's talent acquisition team. We have a host score of wonderful interns this summer. But what I asked Yan Wu to focus on specifically with respect to today's presentation is to draft potential updates to our use policy, really in line with the idea that the board may ultimately decide that you want to adopt a policy governing our use and what some of those parameters might be. And the use policy also lays out some use cases that we've identified. And Margaret will pick up on those use cases as a way of taking you through a design thinking exercise about how we might, what might be appropriate ways to use AI and what are some of the risks and benefits. So I'm gonna start things off by having Yan Wu briefly introduce herself and walk through the draft updated policy that she's developed and how it differs from what we currently have in place. Yan Wu?
Hello, everyone. My name's Yan Wu Li and I'm a current undergraduate student at UC Berkeley. And I've also had the pleasure of interning for Leah throughout this summer, where my main focus has been on how the state bar could potentially leverage AI in order to enhance efficiency. So as Leah touched upon today, I'll be presenting the draft for the proposed updated guidelines for AI use within the state bar, as well as going over a little bit of the research that I conducted. So in terms of research, my main objective was kind of to investigate how other generative AI policies could be mirrored by the state bar. So some of the sources of information that I used included the state of California generative AI guidelines for the public sector, as well as generative AI guidelines from various cities, including Los Angeles, New York, San Jose, Seattle, and Boston. From this, I was able to identify common policies and practices that aligned with the state bar's nature, values, and standards. For the document itself, it is structured in order to address three main concerns, including bias, hallucinations, and transparency. The policies that differ from the interim guidelines that are targeted towards these concerns are the AI Oversight Committee, AI Use Training, as well as bias prevention policies and accountability standards. Starting off with the AI Oversight Committee, the main role of this committee would be to provide structure and guidance on AI use within the state bar. If this committee were to be established, it would comprise individuals with experience in technology, information security, and staff from various areas who are interested and committed to learning about AI. The responsibilities of this committee could include identifying appropriate use cases for AI, recommending guidelines on AI platform testing, recommending training for staff on AI usage, as well as recommending security standards for AI within the state bar. The main goal of this committee would be to assist in a smoother integration of AI within the state bar itself. Next, there would be AI training implemented. This training could vary among various topics, including the general functions of AI, risks of AI, as well as the proper use of AI. From this, staff would be able to understand the functions and risks of AI in order to facilitate the responsible use of these technologies, as well as recognize and mitigate bias within AI usage. Next, another difference with the interim guidelines and this updated policy are bias prevention measures. One major one, which would be bias testing. When AI systems would be used for decisions or analysis that could possibly be implicated by bias, they would be thoroughly tested and regularly checked to detect and monitor bias. There would also be a system in place for reporting and reviewing bias instances when it comes to AI. And the final aspect that differs from the interim guidelines are also enhanced verification policies. So the first would be when AI is used for research, staff would verify the information by the AI, not only by citing the AI itself, but also including an additional citation of a credible resource that verifies information given by AI. Additionally, in order to promote transparency within the state bar, staff could disclose AI usage when the majority of the final product is generated by AI by including a citation that includes the AI platform, as well as how it was used. The goal of this would be to promote the responsible use of AI within the state bar as a whole. Additionally, within this draft, there are proposed guidelines within, there is also an appendix that outlines potential use cases of AI within the state bar that Margaret will touch upon shortly. So with the responsible and safe use of AI, there is great potential for enhanced efficiency within the state bar, as well as improved accessibility and understanding for the public. So now I'm gonna hand it off to Margaret so she can talk more about the expanded use cases. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm so happy to be here virtually. Today, I'm going to, as Leah had mentioned, lead you through more of an interactive session than me speaking in a monologue to you all. And really, I'm drawing upon past work that I've done with legal aid groups and with courts who have similarly been wrestling with their own internal use of AI and how to plan for a responsible, but still ambitious future with the ability of generative AI to assist them in their internal operations and how they serve the public. So drawing on what's just been talked about and kind of the policy document with new use cases, my hope was that I could lead you through a session in which I ask questions. You, as a panel, raising hands, coming off mute, can answer some of those questions, both about opportunities and about risks. Let me share my screen. And I will first kind of show you some of the design workshop materials that I had done with a previous group. This one was about a year ago, working with the Self-Represented Litigation Network, which is a wonderful group of people who provide legal help to those without attorneys, either as legal aid attorneys or court help staff. We had run a similar 45-minute session online, much like I'm hoping to do with you right now, in which I had asked them, where might AI be useful for you as those who are serving the public or making policy about how to serve the public? And they had brainstormed, which I then summarized in this chart, different areas, different use cases about exactly how AI could be useful to help them improve their service offerings, be better able to do legal tasks like research, analysis, document preparation, presentations, and also how to be more strategic. At the same time as we did that kind of optimistic brainstorming, for each of those areas, we also then had discussions about the risks, harms, and worries, about what some bad outcomes might be, how using AI might have negative costs, policy effects, staffing effects, other things, aside from just, you know, wrong information or inaccuracies. And at the same time, we also thought about, well, what does this mean, both in terms of the opportunities and the risks? What are the practical steps that we can take in individual organizations or across organizations to promote higher quality, responsible use of AI? So we brainstormed things like how to collaborate on a common model, how to set common benchmarks, how to set up standards for ethical data sharing. But generally, in that discussion, and I'll zoom out slowly, you can see that we went from kind of the optimistic, here are all the wonderful things that AI might be able to do, the kind of brainstorming all these different ways that they could use it internally for planning, for services, for research. But then also then going into the deeper discussion, both about brainstorming all of the risks and harms, and then also brainstorming infrastructure that could prevent the risks and promote good development. So that's kind of where we got to in that legal aid, court help community. So my hope was that today, in the state bar setting, we could do a similar exercise, where basically if I'm the facilitator, I've set up a board that's blank, where we're at the start. And drawing on the policy document that the state bar has already been creating, it's highlighted in the appendices some of those promising areas for internal use of AI to help state bar staff and stakeholders. So now I'm hoping that if I ask some questions, you all have lots of ideas. If we kind of stage it, so if first we stay in that more optimistic brainstorm mode about opportunities, that will be the first questions I'm asking about kind of opportunities. How could AI possibly help? Where are things we might get excited about? But then we'll balance that out after we have several opportunities brainstormed specifically. Then we'll start talking about the risks, concerns, and kind of ideas for infrastructure planning, policymaking, to help ensure that there's responsible or cautious use of the AI. Hopefully, that's okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm gonna ask questions. I'm gonna take notes. But I'm hoping that you all have ideas. So the first question I have for the group is if we are thinking about opportunities for the state bar staff to generate original content. One of the areas highlighted in the appendix of the policy is that state bar staff might be able to use AI to generate public-facing content about information, resources. Does anyone want to kick off with any kind of ideas about how generative AI might be helpful in content creation? I'll take notes. There's no wrong answer. So hopefully, some people have ideas.
I don't want to hog this, but I have endless ideas because our firm has a generative AI sandbox that is expressly designed to come up with use cases and scenarios in which we can use generative AI for both firm operations and for client-facing work. So I feel like the public-facing content, there's so much that we can do in terms of, you know, we have great content that we're now putting on X, that we're now putting, you know, giving the public updates on what we're doing. So it could generate, for example, a summary of a new rule or a proposed new rule that we have put out for public comment and at least generate the first draft of that. And I think, you know, at least in our experience, we have found that that could get you, you know, it doesn't get you 100% of the way, but it gets you 60% of the way or 70% of the way. So I think sort of from a public protection point of view and just informing the public, the legislature, attorneys about what the state bar is doing, it could be a great resource for generating first drafts and saving time. And then, so I will just get my other ideas that are top of the mind out. Public-facing content, and I see George approaching the table. But I think that there is, you know, yesterday, we talked about in the audit of the closed cases, the need to make sure that we're getting notice letters out, that notice letters are complete. So generative AI could use a template and you could feed other materials into it and see how it works in generating notice letters or other types of notification letters that are more standardized. So that's another idea. And then I know we're not at internal facing yet, but for internal facing, you could also use it to summarize large volumes of material that people could then cut and paste into Odyssey, to the extent that there are fields in Odyssey that require a summary of a volume of information. Generative AI could be used to produce a first draft of that.
Wonderful. Thank you. So others can build off of those, riff with more details or totally new ideas? I'm ready to take notes.
So from OCTC, I'll just chime in. There are a number of things that we've thought about doing for internal documents, doing initial drafts of charging memos, doing initial drafts of investigative reports, hopefully drawing on using documents that we already have loaded into our case management system to draw out excerpts and insert them into investigative reports, summarizing large volumes of documents that we gather in the course of our investigation and hopefully generating potentially bullet point outlines from those materials that can then be used in our documents.
Can I also riff off of that? Because this is one of my favorite uses of generative AI that I actually find useful in my work, which involves a lot of investigations, is using it to brainstorm questions to ask of witnesses. It's actually really, really useful and interesting because it sometimes comes up with lines of inquiry that I wouldn't necessarily have thought of. And it is a great first draft, is if you feed a bunch of information into it and ask, you know, hey, I'm about to interview this person. What questions should I ask them? And then you can iterate on that and say, go deeper on this topic. Or, you know, it's just interesting to play around with it and see what it comes up. But the brainstorming use cases, one that I am quite fond of.
And if, George, I could build a little bit on some of the things you talked about. It seems to me that we could use maybe AI to have more of an outward-facing conversation with the public. I know we get a lot of things, a lot of complaints that technically aren't complaints. So maybe if there was a more of a conversational AI interface where somebody could say, I've got a problem with my lawyer, and then there could be a conversation, we go forth, back and forth, and say like, well, what is the problem? And then start to dig down and, well, that's really not a complaint, you know, handleable by the state bar.
No, I mean, that's one of the things that we've thought about is basically having an AI-driven conversation. The interface, right now, we have an online complaint portal, but converting that so that it's more of an AI-driven portal that can generate questions based on answers, rather than just having a decision tree, which is kind of what we're working on now. Instead, using AI to kind of fine-tune that to request information and potentially as they input information or as they upload documents, review those documents, and then generate additional questions.
And would there be any kind of a, if a complaint actually is going through the process, some sort of update or status conversation that people could have, whether it's the complainant or the attorney or any of those folks?
I mean, yes, ideally, down the road, one of the things that we were hoping to move to and AI could certainly potentially help with this would be an online system where people would get a PIN number or something when they filed a complaint. And rather than calling in for a request, they could use a computerized system in their PIN number to access an automated status update. And potentially, AI could play a role in that. You know, the systems that exist now basically provide just certain routine status information, but potentially with an AI interface, we could again, if we could, generate a kind of more live question-answer format to get status, rather than having to have them call into a call center.
All right. I see Trustee Buena Ventura.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, one of the things that immediately crossed my mind when we're talking about AI is I have seen in political campaigns where basically an AI model of the candidate answering questions as if they're live and upfront and in person when people are asking about their policies or their stand and positions on certain things. And it's incredible to see it because it's like as if you're talking to a real person and that person is responding to what you were interested in. And so I think it's extremely effective in that sense. But I also am a bit concerned if that's something that we eventually use, that the response is gonna be giving legal advice. And so on the one hand, I think AI is terrific. For example, one of the things that I know people are interested in is they want to find out organizations who would give free legal assistance, nonprofits, free pro bono work. And I think something that could really be helpful to the public is if to have that kind of integrated system where they're actually sort of talking to someone and they're telling them, explaining to them how you can go about getting pro bono assistance, but at the same time, not crossing the line of actually giving it themselves in this discussion that they had. So I find this topic quite fascinating and thank you for bringing it to the table.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, Ray? So this example of the political campaign, you mean like an avatar kind of thing, like a? It's a, okay. All right.
It's actually more than an avatar. It almost looks exactly like the candidate or the person. And so it's just so artfully done and the technology behind it, it's amazing. It's like you're looking to a duplicate mirror image of yourself. So, yeah.
All right. Trustee Shelby.
Good morning. And I'm gonna couch my comments by saying candidly, I do not have a level of familiarity with AI. And so this conversation is so interesting to me. I think I've just personally had a discomfort level and I'm realizing that I've got to alleviate that discomfort. But as you all were talking, I was thinking about sort of the general public. You know, oftentimes, I share with people that I reside on the State Bar Board of Directors and they don't know what that is. And they don't know why a person who does not have a law degree and spent 25 years in public affairs is sitting on a dais such as this. And so as I begin to talk about the, you know, things like our public liaison, outreach and engagement, legal aid, people really just raise an eyebrow or even just the admissions function or the disciplinary function or the licensing function. And so how do you, how would you utilize a tool like AI to really, in sort of the realm of outreach and engagement, right? Particularly since with the, particularly since we don't have that at the state bar. That's the first piece. And then the other is how do you utilize it in a way that is responsive or understanding of communities of color and marginalized communities? Because I think that's important, too. So.
I love that. And if I could just add quickly, sorry, to put up, Margaret, the helping attorneys in the discipline system with like self-representation, self-help. But we've been struggling to fund this court-appointed council program for attorneys in the discipline system. And I'm really wondering if there's a way to leverage AI.
I also think that a lot of the things, Melanie's mention of admissions made me think, too, a lot of the things that have been mentioned and that George was talking about could also be used in the admissions context, right? If there were people calling with questions about their moral character application or people have questions, I feel like generative AI could be used to easily create FAQ or create more user-friendly ways in which people can receive information. If there were, if everybody had a sort of unique kind of identifier or ticket, questions could be answered more quickly through an online format.
Great discussion. Trustee Barahona. Oh, I think you're on mute. Okay, Mike. Can you hear us? Okay. Keep going. Okay. Yes. Trustee Grande.
Something else that I don't know if it's up there, but with any maybe proposed policy changes or rules that we could do the cost-benefit analysis with different stakeholders, just to have that first draft. Another thing is, I think, taking our public-facing documents and seeing how they can be interpreted in a more easy-to-understand way so that they can actually communicate, I think especially to attorneys, how they can digest the information in a more clear-to-understand way and actually apply it. And, yeah, I mean, I can go on and on because we have an AI working group at my firm, but I'm just gonna stop there, too.
That raised another use case, which is just translations into multiple languages that we don't necessarily have now.
All right. Trustee Barahona.
Yeah. So sorry. My son played video games on his computer and did not realize that my mouse was dead, so apologies. A few ideas. One is, I think that because we are instilling sort of a trust in the public in our work, I think sharing stories of success and thematically organizing what we're hearing as feedback based on folks' experience with us, I think would be really smart and strategic in doing that consistently. You know, I, this is both a positive but also a concern, which is that you can translate information fairly quickly. But I think, you know, on the other side, you want to make sure that it's culturally relevant and appropriate. So that's the other. And it really, what I love about it is that, you know, it really simplifies jargon. And in this field, right, there can be a lot of jargon and folks can be like, wait, what, what do you mean by that? So I know for me, that's one way I use it. The one sort of issue or... The one sort of issue or areas, sort of this, the practice of law and the rigor of the work and does this temper down the rigor for folks? Or does this just accelerate, accelerate their, their, you know what I mean? Like I had this question around the rigor, except to be a lawyer and an attorney. And what does that mean? And is this something you would want? Is it, you'd want everybody using it, but would, would senior leaders benefit more? I'm just really curious about sort of that as a whole. And I think if you can train the AI to be kind in its response, because it can be so robotic. And so there's a way, I think, that you can train it to say, thank you so much for reaching out or just sound a little bit less robotic without getting into some, you know, weird area. Because they know we have to have a sense of professionalism and the way we respond to folks. But when folks are reaching out for help, they're in some sort of distress or stress. And so you're sort of alleviating that. And I've seen AI, you know, do that more and more as you interact with it and as you train it.
That is trustee good.
Thank you, Chair. I also was thinking about how can we use AI to make the profession more accessible to, you know, first generation college and law student graduates and folks from historically underrepresented communities? And kind of continue the work that the Council on Access and Fairness is sort of doing things. And I'm wondering if there's a way for AI to sort of demystify the legal profession, if you will, for folks who are in college who might be considering a legal career and how to go about kind of doing it. So kind of more pipeline building.
Well, oh, I see.
Stevens.
Stevens, I'll just give a little bit of a time warning. I might pivot us to the more cynical, negative risk conversation in just a second for this area. But trustee Stevens, please be optimistic for another comment.
I'll try. I, well, I want Yama Lee to, to prepare herself to become our chief information officer. So just, I'm just planting that seed optimistically.
She's barely of legal working age. She's 18 years old, very impressive young woman, yes.
I'm optimistic. I do think that we need an edge, a front facing for the public educational component where we help folks understand what AI is and how we use it, right? Because there's so many different ways. There's conversational AI, there's generative AI, there's, and, and I think people get scared when they don't understand what the AI can do and how we can control limitations on what it does.
All right, I'm going to then ask, we'll, we'll brainstorm ideas on another topic, not content topic, in just a second. But looking back over all the ideas that we've generated over the past 10, 15 minutes about using AI to draft notices about new rules or proposals, auditing closed cases and getting notice letters out, helping attorneys in disciplinary proceedings, having live Q and A about cases, being trauma informed, empathetic. In the internal uses, drafting charging memos, investigative reports, looking through large amounts of documents and drawing out excerpts, summarizing, brainstorming interview questions. If we put our more kind of risk goggles on and think what could go wrong? Either the AI technically doing something wrong, humans using the AI possibly making mistakes, being overconfident, putting document, data or documents in that. All of those, those worries about either the machines getting it wrong or the humans using it, making mistakes with it. Does anyone want to kick off what could go wrong or things that you think could mitigate those risks? We can have those conversations simultaneously, the risks and how to mitigate them. Trustee good?
Yeah, so the obvious one that everybody's been talking about is baking in bias into these systems and how to avoid doing that and making sure that we're not, yeah, baking in bias, that we're doing something that's de-biasing the use of AI.
Let's say hypothetically, there is a global IT outage and it affects a majority of the systems out there, including, you know, state bar processes, you know, affecting hearings, affecting the ability to communicate with, with the public. So I would say a plan to deal with a technology glitch or, or an outage. Trustee Tony.
I'm going to start off by thanking Leah for being responsive and putting this together and thanking Margaret for the conversation. I am an unbeliever, a non-believer in AI. I don't believe in AI. So in terms of risks, I'm going to talk about both internal and global risks. So internal, I'm concerned about AI being used to hack the, the systems that we have, the computers, the data owned by the state bar. We already know people try to hack it, try to get their grades or their, you know, test results early or, you know, get questions and stuff from the bar exam, okay? AI is going to make it a lot easier for them to do that. AI is a double edged sword. It doesn't only cut one way, it cuts two ways. And so I, I, I have a lot of concern about that. I have a lot of concern about AI promoting intellectual laziness and, and lack of rigor because it's so easy to be dependent on something else to come up with your original content. I don't like that. I discourage it very much among my staff. I can't fire them for it, but I make it very clear I don't like it and that I expect them to let me know and to disclose when they use it in any document they give to me, period. I, I'm, I'm just concerned that maybe it's I distrust processes I don't understand and I can't see operate because there's so much under the hood with AI that we don't see, that is not imperant. It, it's a form of magic, if you will. And so I, I'm, you know, and all my global concerns have to do with, I am one of the people that's concerned about artificial intelligence gaining sentience, okay? I am one of those people. About artificial intelligence, it's supposed to be some sort of self-learning platform that it learns to do more things than it is taught, that these little firewalls that people talk about with the confidential information, those little things, you know, you're, you're supposed to be able to like, you know, put, 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 put boundaries around AI so that they don't leak confidential information into a larger database, right? I mean, we're in the world where data brokers, huge business, data brokers, they're going to have their own AIs. And if you're a data broker, your AI is going to want to figure out how to communicate with the AIs that are behind these firewalls so that you can get the data. Because that's what their AIs are going to be designed to do, maximize gathering data, okay? So we're going to be in a situation where you have, for those of you who remember Mad Magazine, Spy versus Spy, we're going to have AI versus AI, okay? All parties can use AI, okay, for whatever goal that they want. And so, and the end goal of AI and the reason billions and billions are being invested in AI is to turn a profit. It is to create more wealth that's more concentrated in fewer hands, which is bad for society. You look at a place like San Francisco and I can show you the increase in homelessness is related to the increase of the concentration of wealth. San Francisco has a wealth problem. The US, the globe has a wealth problem. That's what's, poverty is just a byproduct. We don't have a poverty problem, we have a wealth problem. AI will make it worse. End of my speech for now.
Thank you. If anyone wants to build off of it or has thoughts on mitigation, protection, so whether it's around data, keeping confidentiality, abiding by data laws and policies or about the rigor and the quality disclosures, transparency, limits on use, especially thinking back to the specific use cases. Does anyone want to say which ones they think are more feasible near term with lower risk versus those that are higher risk that might need a lot more planning or infrastructure or piloting and, and quality control before they'd be considered?
George.
So I think for OCTC, some of the lower risk, more currently available ones are the summarization tools, which AI actually is pretty good at already. And then also some of the document generation ones, subject to the mitigation, of course, that everybody needs to understand that AI is a tool and if it's generating documents, their first drafts, and they do need to be checked to make sure that there's not something wrong in them. In terms of mitigation, some of the concerns I think we have are, you know, AI doing what it's already done in other cases, which is basically filling in gaps in ways that aren't correct to basically create information that isn't correct and how we catch that and how we retrain the tool if that happens to prevent that from happening as it moves forward.
All right, trustee Barahona.
Yeah, thank you. I think our risk also might be, we, we know how many cases our staff are working on and how busy they are. And so we could see, not backlash, but you know, folks saying, well, this was, because, because we have to disclose that it was AI generated to a certain degree, folks may question the decision or say, well, I, I want this double checked now. I, I know that this was generated, you know, generated by AI, like I disagree and therefore I'm going to continue this. You know, complain or, or raise this issue. So there could be sort of that opposite effect that, that, that we hope for. And I think one way to mitigate it is sort of the level of socialization ahead of any use with the public to, to best understand how we are using it and to what extent we have particular policies and regulations for it. I think you do have to kind of educate folks on, on the use and give examples on that feel really straightforward to understand. And that might be, I think that might be helpful.
I think to build on what George was talking about on low risk use cases, I think using AI to make existing content that we have more concise and more digestible and creating FAQ from existing content seems low risk because we'd be training it on stuff that we've already written and vetted before. And I think to build on what trustee Barahona was talking about, I think it's important to make sure that folks understand, I mean, folks who are using it within the state bar understand that it's a large language model and how large language models work. And so I think understanding how it works helps to ensure that folks are adequately checking things as though they're first drafts.
The topic of AI helping with more culturally appropriate outreach, wider outreach, simplifying jargon or helping on educating young lawyers or young college age students about a pipeline? Any thoughts about risks or if that's a ripe area, near term, lower risk? Or if that's higher risk, if anyone has ideas?
I think some of it depends on how well AI is trained on the particular language that you're looking at. And I think it will require very careful vetting and review of the translation that comes out. I don't think we should be able to rely on it like, oh yeah, it'll just translate and that'll be fine. I think that that's one where we have to, if we're going to be using AI to do that, making sure that it's trained properly and that we have adequate controls to ensure that the translations that are coming out are what we want it to say and that the vocabulary it's using is, is accurate. And to go to a point that was made earlier, that it's taking the right tone.
Trustee good.
And there, you know, if we got it wrong, the net result may be to drive people away from the profession rather than draw them in. So, and I think that's one where the de-biasing is particularly critical.
Okay, trustee Barahona.
I'm not sure, Margaret, if you, if there's a way to study sort of the impact of, I don't know if you've heard of these sort of blind interview processes that are created to unbiased folks when you're in an interview process. And there's a way, there's a process. So I'm curious if a way to mitigate some of this sort of bias piece is around studying the ways in which other processes that exist and the language that's entered and the way it is trained, unbiased, it would be interesting to take a look at and sort of learn from, so that we're building the right system and the right platform on our end.
Yeah, I think just for a short interject, a lot of what we're doing right now is we're, as I'm working hands on with some legal aid groups, a lot of it is getting very specific. So for a given task, so thinking about a translation task, getting very specific about translation of, let's say, a proposed rule and then going through all of the specific possible harms and risks and getting examples of a good, low bias, low risk, high quality version of that task of like a notice and then examples of bad ones. But a lot of it takes, you know, concentrated experts working together to either collect examples of bad and good or to imagine bad and good. But so much of the de-biasing and prevention of harm is really digging into the particulars of a given task and then all of the things that could go well or bad. So I think, yeah, probably as the state bar decides which of these tasks, if we think about this and kind of develop So I think, yeah, probably as the state bar decides which of these tasks, if we think about this in kind of developer and AI technical terms, a lot of these are identifying particular tasks and then setting almost up working groups for those tasks of people who regularly do them and see how they go well or how they go wrong. And also are thinking of that cultural competency about for different audiences, how it could go well or go wrong. So it's definitely, you have to be very systematic, but a lot of it's just getting very particular. So. Leah, you have your hand up?
Did you want to jump in there?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a risk and then maybe briefly share what we're doing on translations right now because it's so relevant. I think a risk, I don't know how to say this really succinctly, but it's that in order for all of this to work properly, you have to have the ability to review the final product. And our ability to do that is based on our education experience, et cetera. At some point, you have this group of people that doesn't have the underlying experience. This is my fear, that they can't effectively check the product. And there's also a bit of laziness, perhaps, I would say, that happens because you become like overly reliant on the product. And I don't want it, laziness is kind of a pejorative word, but for example, when people started figuring out that they could use ChatGPT to drop email. And before there was a lot of understanding that you can train it to speak in your voice, I started getting a lot of emails that would say, I hope this email finds you well. You know, every email started with that. It's like a dead giveaway that this is a ChatGPT generated email. So there's something about like the rigor that's required to actually use these tools well. That it's a lot of diligence, but then also like your own fundamental knowledge and skill set that you bring to bear to check the work and upgrade it. And I get worried about or wonder if we're going to lose that at some point. And that ties perhaps to our role as a regulator of law schools. And thinking about how law schools are deploying these tools, if they are at all, and do we think it's appropriate for us to start really regulating or thinking through what we think law schools should be doing to train students on how to effectively use these tools? So. So my thoughts there.
Just to piggyback off of what Leah said, one of the things I've seen in a product that was presented to my office was certain things being built into generated product that an individual review, actually reviewing the product or the end result of the AI output, that they would be required to find those like little Easter eggs and change them. And if they did not, then that was an indication that they had actually not reviewed that document properly and it would get kicked back. So I think that there's kind of milestone type, type things that can help mitigate.
Yeah, it reminds me of when the steering wheel vibrates at you if you're not taking enough control of your car with the auto lane robot. But yeah, that's very interesting to have some of those checks. So whether it's designed into the system, whether it's with training, all of those things we would kind of consider the infrastructure or things to start preparing for. So it could be training, it could be requirements of the technical products you're using, et cetera. Well, I know we're getting close to the hour. I'll just reflect that I'm just so impressed by how many ideas that you came up with and I'll be working with Leah and her team to organize this and give it back to you so that you have kind of the brainstorm and the risks. What I've seen other groups do after having a discussion like this is, well, there are other areas for AI that are included in that policy document in the appendices. So whether it's thinking through the same brainstorm and risks for more of the research tasks, summarizations and analysis, or the research tasks, doing policy research or assisting the public with their legal research. But moving towards something that does look like a staged agenda of the nearer term, meaning lower risk, but still with value and impact ideas. Those often tend to be the helping the helper ideas where there are existing staff members who are well trained, who have that expertise and the AI is assisting them to improve their capability and efficiency, but they're playing a strong role in reviewing. So I've seen a lot of legal aid in courts really taking those on as almost our first round to really dive in to both getting the technical solutions ready, but also the policy, the training, the all of the kind of risk mitigation strategies ready, but really kind of staging an agenda of near term and longer term ideas. And then setting up working groups or basically R and D groups to start training and fine tuning models to see if they can do that and then what the the policy and protections around those are. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or big picture thoughts. I'm happy to still take some more notes.
Yes, trustee Tony.
In terms of action and strategy, I do think that it's worth developing plans to defend against outside AI attacks on the state bar data, materials, confidential information. Because we know for a fact that that has happened, both deliberately and sometimes by accident. And AI is going to become much more powerful in the hands of people who wish to do it deliberately. And we need to, I believe, the state bar needs to have a plan to prevent it.
I think certainly we can add that as a discussion item in our next strategic plan discussion. If that's not already in there. So maybe if staff could highlight that. All right. Any other thoughts?
Maybe I can't, I can't see Brandon if there's other trustees. I could just kind of circle back to the original opening. And see if, so I think hopefully the board has a sense that this is something that we are clearly exploring as an, as an organization. As I mentioned, we have multiple strands going on. We're a little hampered by our lack of dedicated staffing, but hopefully we'll be fixing that soon. And we certainly are going to take advantage of this great work that you all have done today because I think it's going to help us advance more of a comprehensive framework for, for those strands or pathways that, that we are currently engaged on or embarking on. But the, one of the original motivations for this conversation at the board level was for the board to ultimately weigh in on the state bar's official use cases or the state bar's AI policy, use policy. And what that weighing in on could look like is something like this, you're informing it, you're sharing your ideas. But it also could be something more formal where the board adopts the policy. And so I guess I'd like to close this conversation out with what, where would you guys like to go next? We obviously are going to go next in further fleshing out the policy, the use cases, et cetera. But where, how would you like to engage on this going forward?
Trustee Tony.
You know, I think ultimately between Leah, George and Aileen, that they have ultimate responsibility and authority when it comes to how the staff uses AI. I think it's fine for you to, you know, at periodic times, inform the board. But I'm not sure that it's appropriate for the board. I don't feel a need myself for the board to have a, you know, to get into the weeds, if you will. Okay? What I do feel the board needs to do is to, because things are changing annually, I mean, quickly, okay, in AI. AI is developing quickly. I do think on an annual basis, we ought to review our guidance to the legal community, which is our regulatory responsibility as a board. And that that's where the board should spend its time on. Making sure that the guidance we provide to the legal community is updated, remains relevant, because that is our core mission. And I would rather that have the board time spent on that. And for the staff to feel empowered to, you know, the staff leadership to do what they do. I don't have to agree with it, but that is their responsibility and their authority.
Trustee Good.
I just wanted to thank you, Leah, for your leadership on this and to your intern, Ms. Lee. Thank you so much. And having Ms. Hagan here from Stanford, that's really phenomenal. And I wanted to say, I would hope that the board would not hamper your efforts to explore uses of AI at the state bar because we know economically, if there are efficiencies that can be gained while mitigating risks, it's certainly something that we need to be exploring based upon what we're hearing about the possibility of future fee increases. So to that end, I would say if you think that any one of us could be helpful, please reach out to us. You know, I'm happy to, to help. All of us are grappling with AI within our law firms, government entities, you know, other organizations. But, you know, otherwise, please, please proceed. And hopefully we won't hamper your efforts. Thanks.
All right, trustee Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would be actually interested in a public outreach campaign to find out what people are thinking, what attorneys are thinking. I know we're, we're a very good composition of board, but we don't own the marketplace of ideas. And I would certainly really would love to see us engaging with the public earlier rather than putting something together and then going out for public comment. So I think that kind of input early in the process, as this thing is still developing, I think would be a tremendous input and valuable to us. Thanks.
Trustee Chen.
I think that because it feels like such an unknown to many people and because we're at the very earliest stages of thinking about how Gen AI might be used at the state bar, I wonder whether there would be benefit to calling whatever we first try out a pilot. I think that gives people some comfort that it's not, you know, that you're going to be assessing and reassessing and figuring out, is this something we want to continue doing? And then I would encourage us as we try certain use cases to keep some, to apply some rigor in keeping records about how it's going. I think it would be useful for the board to have specific examples to look at of use cases that worked well, perhaps even use cases that didn't work well. And to have actual data and information about the time savings that was generated. So for example, if it usually takes X number of hours to generate a charging memo, using generative AI cuts that time down by X percent. Or it then, you know, rather than, and, and just having data like that, I think will be really useful in helping to assess its efficacy. I think if we want to move towards broader adoption, that will also help.
Trustee Shelby.
I really like trustee Buena Ventura's idea in terms of the engagement. And I think in relation to engagement, I would just ask that we cast the widest net possible so we capture the diversity of voices culturally, socioeconomically and geographically. I think that is really important. And, you know, with the different constituencies that we serve, I think it's critical to ensure in this public facing campaign. And then, and then, and, and then in a linguistic way as well, right? As it relates to sort of language. So I think that's really important. So I really wanted to underscore that. Thank you.
Trustee Grande.
I think for me, what would be helpful is as we adopt different uses of AI with the, with bias prevention, like how exactly we would be testing that to determine that we're, we're actually preventing bias and also looking for resources if there is, there are other organizations or companies that already have, you know, they've already developed something that we look there instead of trying to figure it out on our own.
Trustee Suwal.
I just had a quick question. Leah, from Ms. Lee's presentation, I should we walk out of this meeting with an understanding that there is already sort of an AI working group within, within the state bar already? I had to step out of the room for a short while and so I'm not sure if that, if there is such a thing just yet or that is something that's being contemplated.
There is, there's a community of practice, but one of the things that Yondu's research has highlighted is that the best practice is to create that kind of internal working group or steering committee. I think you heard Margaret also talking about multiple ones of those perhaps for the different various use cases. So that's where we need to go to, at the risk of being a broken record. We really do need to have some dedicated staffing here to support all of that, all of that effort. But we absolutely need to create that group and, and we will, you know, in the, in the near term.
Just have a quick question for Margaret. Margaret, from your standpoint, what are some things that you would think would be beneficial from an oversight standpoint? How can the board really engage with staff in a meaningful way without interfering and, you know, basically creating more work for staff without having meaningful oversight? Are there some principles that we can employ and as a, as a board coming up with some policies on how to best address this?
Well, yes, I think there's the questions about kind of the performance, I think, which one of the trustees was just talking about really keeping data about, usually we think about two ways to kind of broadways that we measure whether AI is doing a good job or a harmful job. And that's usually about quality and efficiency. So definitely introducing the practices of if you are going to be using AI. And especially if, I think it should be encouraged that in a pilot phase, that there is regular check-ins about efficiencies, whether that's through analytics, automated, or people just keeping track. But really tracking at least some amount of the time saved. So timing yourself doing it without and timing yourself with. I think those are really key factors during the pilot phase, not forever and ever, but those analytics. But especially around quality. Again, this does take something like a working group to sit down and think very hard about what quality or lack of quality looks like for a given task, whether that's drafting a document, communicating to the public, but setting up, it doesn't have to be exhaustive, but usually when we've worked with legal aid lawyers defining explicit things that would show quality or harm and bias, it usually looks like a list of about 10 factors. And then reviewing what they make with the AI and seeing, even just for a small sample, are we rising to quality or seeing any of these harms, including bias, toxicity, inaccuracies? But having that kind of framework in place earlier can help you gather some of those data points and also help for that kind of review. Because I think a lot of times when we do these tasks as lawyers, we don't have explicit quality standards about what makes something good or bad. So a little bit of that pre-planning, so especially if you're about to pilot the use of AI for drafting notice letters, just kind of having that working group define 10 to 15 quality standards and then agree to meet back and do some manual review of what the AI has created to see how it measures up. That, I think, in combination with the efficiency analytics will both help kind of demonstrate value for problems, but also help you or others kind of make sure that the quality really is being reviewed.
Any other questions or comments? I think it strikes me in listening to this presentation and to some of the concerns and viewpoints of, of the board that there should be a outreach to the public, that there That there should be a outreach to the public, that there should uh, be a gathering of information that uh, certain. Stakeholders uh, deem as, as important in this area of, of AI, whether it exhibits bias. Um, that's absolutely great information to collect, but it also seems that we also, it needs to be tempered by. This idea that staff needs to be able to act quickly, um, and especially here at the very beginning. Um, where we're starting to implement some of these uh, these procedures. That we can't get too tied down, I guess, with, with forming a task force with uh, massive public outreach. And I'm wondering if there's a way to quickly accomplish some of that, whether it's individuals who have partnered with the state bar in the past. Who we have a existing relationship with and that we can bring on board quickly. Um, whether it's through a task force, a working group, um, or that. So I don't know if we need to fully flush out. That and Leah, I don't know if that's what you were, you know, the direction that you're looking for in this agenda item. Uh, but I think it sounds like there is appetite on the board for such, uh, you know, for gathering such a group such as that. But I also want to be uh, cognizant of. That, that your day-to-day decisions and not necessarily impeding those unnecessarily.
Okay, yeah, well, maybe we can discuss it further because I think there's lots of ways to do that broad outreach. Um, I wasn't necessarily thinking about that kind of working group that involves representatives from multiple entities. Um, but, but what I do know for sure is we need internal working groups. To um, kind of do exactly what Margaret's been talking about with respect to the use cases, developing the, the metrics. Um, requirements for documenting use and, and costs and benefits essentially. So. I, I, that is a first step. And then I think the public outreach and attorney outreach and engagement. Is a different issue and I just love to have some time to think about how best to do that.
I think as a board, we can also be thinking about. You know, kind of to touch on what trustee Tony talked about, is this purely a staff issue or a combination of both staff and board oversight? And I think ultimately there has to be board oversight. And so I would just say as, as uh, we go throughout the next couple of months. Um, board members, if you could think about what sort of oversight, um, we should be exhibiting. And um, come back with some ideas at the next board meeting. All right. Is that, uh, is that it?
Yes.
All right.
So.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Margaret.
No, thank you all. I really appreciate the chance to um, come and hear all of the great things you're working on. And like I said, I'll work with Leah and her team to. Clean up the whiteboard I was working on and, and make it available to you so that you have it as well.
Margaret, thank you to you and your team. Uh, it's a pleasure having you uh, here. And then Ms. Lee, thank you so much for. Uh, using your, your talents uh, here at the state bar. And uh, it's, it's a pleasure, I'm sure, to uh, continue to work with you. And so I know Leah talks. Incredibly highly of you and your, your product, work products. So thank you for investing your time with us.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
All right. I think that brings us to the end of this agenda item and then uh, necessarily to the end of this uh, meeting. I know everybody wants to stay around. To spend as much time as possible with each other, but uh, we will bring this meeting to uh, an end. Uh, we'll adjourn it and thank you so much to those in the public who are, are watching and for your continued input. All right. Have a good rest of your weekend.
Thank you. Bye bye.